Yes, Mayor. Please stand and join me in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's power heads. Dareingly Father, we ask that you be with us today as we conduct the business of our community. Be with those in attendance today. Be with our first responders as they carry out their duties in this community and all over the United States. We ask that you... We thank you for the rain today and we pray for more. We ask these things in your name, Amen.
Amen.
Any corrections to the September 17 minutes?
No.
If not, they stand approved as submitted. At this time, we have public comment and if we give anybody that wants to address the City Commission on something that's not on the agenda, you can come before us and address us at the podium. State your name, man. Anybody? Okay. Moving on.
Mayor and Commissioners, Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Vicky Harshberger on behalf of Mosaic to allow the mayor to proclaim the month of October 2019 as National Disabilities Employment Awareness Month in Garden City.
Entertainer motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the proclamation as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the proclamations as submitted. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay. You're out. State your name, please.
My name is Tom Marshall. I'm the job coach at Mosaic. And you?
Aaron Osvald. I work at Jones. I also Zach Robinson, just Lawrence, Kansas.
Very good. Qualified workers are becoming hard to finder... Hard to finder? Hard to find these days. And to combat this workforce crisis, an increasing number of employers are hiring people with disabilities, the fastest growing segment and most widely overlooked employable minority of our population. Mosaic is a nonprofit healthcare organization that helps people with diverse needs secure meaningful employment. Additionally, as a partner with vocational rehab, Mosaic is privileged to serve not only those within our agency, but throughout the Garden City community. Thank you so much for this time to acknowledge those with disabilities and their contributions. And I'd also like to take a minute to thank those who do employ our individuals with disabilities. Aaron?
I am a person with disabilities and a contributing member of my community. I am thankful for bold business that hires people with disabilities. They see abilities, not disabilities. I challenge you to be part of the disabilities employment movement. Be a bold partner because inclusion works.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep.
We'll have our executive director spot.
I'll read this proclamation. It says, "Whereas the month of October 2019 has been designated as National Disability Employment Awareness Month to celebrate and recognize individuals with disabilities who make important contributions in their workplace. And whereas, employment is vital to the independence, empowerment, and quality of life of Americans with disabilities. And whereas, the landmark Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 removed barriers, enabling many individuals with disabilities to find more opportunity to use their gifts and talents in the workplace. And whereas, the United States Congress by joint resolution approved April 11, 1945, has designated October of each year as National Disability Employment Awareness Month to recognize the contributions of Americans with disabilities to encourage all citizens to help ensure their full inclusion in the workplace. And whereas, the goals of this city properly give recognition to those who directly help people with disabilities gain full access to training and employment opportunities to create productive and satisfying lives and to live independently as possible. Now, therefore, I Dan Fank as the mayor of the City of Garden City do hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month in the City of Garden City and call upon all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities. Therefore, I encourage the citizens of Garden City to seek information from those organizations with expertise in matters concerning professionals, professions, who support individuals with intelligent developmental disabilities. Signed and sealed this first day of October 2019, Dan Fank as the mayor." Okay.
Mayor and Commissioners, Item 6B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from the Finney County Humane Society to allow the mayor to proclaim October 12, 2019, as Bartoberfest Celebration Day in Garden City, Kansas.
I make the motion we approve the proclamation as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve Bartoberfest Celebration Day in Garden City. All those... Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Glass of water.
I think we have some folks from the Humane Society here. If you'd like to go up and join the mayor for a picture, mayor, would you like to hear me this one? Give you a break on that one? Finney County Humane Society works to provide comprehensive and compassionate care to animals who are seeking a loving home. And whereas, since 1997, the mission of the Finney County Humane Society is the prevention of cruelty to animals, the relief of suffering among animals, the extension of humane education, and to aid in finding suitable placement for homeless animals. And whereas, the Finney County Humane Society annually cares for more than 3,175 animals and never turns away a furry friend in need. And whereas, the Finney County Humane Society spends over $1,200 a day for food, care, and shelter for animals, dispenses over 12,100 medications to help pets recover from illness, provides over 38,000 on vaccinations, provides over $12,600 in vouchers, $2,250 for low-cost spay-neuter clinics, and $11,660 to help reduce the cost of pet adoptions, and spends nearly $50,000 a year transporting dogs and cats to rescues all over the United States in order to save lives instead of euthanizing. And whereas, the Finney County Humane Society will be hosting an event called Bartoberfest to raise much-needed funds to continue offering vaccines, low-cost spay-and-neuter clinics, educational materials, and other work of the society and animal shelter. And whereas, this free and fun family event will take place on Saturday, October 12, 2019, from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Stevens Park, and is an opportunity for everyone to bring their dogs to the park to enjoy vendor booths, a silent auction, a picture booth, a vaccination clinic, train rides, games for the kids, canine behavior demonstrations, Garden City Police Department's canine demonstrations, animal costume contest judged by local celebrities, and a dog jog glow-run-walk. And now, therefore, I Dan Fank Howser, mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do here by proclaim the month of... I'm sorry. Proclaim October 12, 2019, as Bartoberfest Celebration Day in the City of Garden City, Kansas, and recognize the... And recognizes the Finney County Humane Society and Animal Shelter for the work they have done in bringing better health, quality of life, happiness to both animals and citizens, and encourage citizens to volunteer, adopt a pet, donate foods, funds, or become foster caregivers, and celebrate the benefits of having dogs and cats as pets and companions this day and throughout the year. Signed and sealed this first day of October 2019, Dan Fank Howser, Mayor.
You're the mayor. Good and animal costume. Thank you. Thank you.
That's quite the name, Public Power Week.
Okay.
Mayor and Commissioners, Item 6C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the mayor proclaiming the week of October 6 through 12, 2019, as Public Power Week in Garden City, Kansas.
I move that we approve the week of October 6 through 12, 2019, as Public Power Week in Garden City.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve Public Power Week, October 6 through the 12, 2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Would invite Mike and the... There you are.
Just kind of rose right out of there. Anyway. We could... Just a second. I think, Mayor, if Matt will click on that thing he's supposed to draw some pictures that roll through.
Oh, cool.
Just talk real quick. Last week, the electric department was downtown during Fall Fest, and they did a lot of different things down there showing their support for the community. And here's a few pictures of things that they do all year long that quite often goes unrecognized by the general public. Public Power Week is recognized by 181 municipal electric systems in Kansas, Garden City being the second largest, and were part of a group of 2,000 nationwide municipal electric systems that serve their communities. And that old picture of that truck was that one in that... So, anyway, here you go. And now we're ready, Mayor, whenever you're ready. And I think, Mayor, these guys probably want to come up and have a picture with you while you do this.
All right. I'll read this proclamation. Whereas the citizens of Garden City, Kansas, place high value on local control over community services and therefore have chosen to operate a community-owned, non-for-profit electric utility. And as customers and owners of our utility, electric utility, have a direct say in utility operations and policies. And whereas, the Garden City Electric Department provides our homes, businesses, farms, social service, and local government agencies with reliable, effective, and cost-effective electricity, employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service as not-for-profit rates. Whereas, the Garden City Electric Department is a valuable community asset that contributes to the well-being of local citizens through effective energy effectiveness in customer service, environmental protection, in economic development, and safety awareness. And whereas, the Garden City Electric Department is dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many consumer protections and continues to make our community a better place to live and work, and contributes to protecting the global environment. And whereas, the Garden City Electric Department will continue to work to bring low-cost, safe, reliable electricity to communities, homes, businesses, just as it has since 1914, the year when the utility was created to serve all the citizens of Garden City. Now, therefore, I Dan Fank as the mayor of the City of Garden City do hereby proclaim October 6 through the 12, 2019, as Public Power Week in Garden City, Kansas, and recognize the Garden City Electric Department for its contributions to the community and to educate customer owners, policymakers, and employees on the benefits of public power. Therefore, I encourage our community to join hands with more than 2,000 other public power systems in the United States in this celebration of public power, which is best for the consumers, business, and community in the nation. Signed and sealed, the first day of October 2019, Dan Fank as the mayor. All right. You're the one.
Thank you, gentlemen. Signed and sealed.
Item 7A, I'm going to invite Public Works Director Sam Kern up to provide an update on the sidewalk ADA compliance issue on the 1,000 block of East Labrador Boulevard.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The background on this was the city received an ADA sidewalk compliance notice case from the state, from Kansas Department of Transportation of Civil Rights and Right-of-Way Division, which identified sidewalk deficiencies or trip hazards on Labrador from Belmont Place to Roland in early May of 2019. Staff has been working with the property owners on correcting and identifying sidewalk deficiencies this summer. All sidewalk sections that were identified for replacement have been completed. Material costs for the sidewalk replacements was paid by the property owners and the labor was provided by the city. The remaining minor concrete trip hazards will be completed by Precision Concrete Cutting Midwest by using a method of shaving off the high spots in the sidewalk. Staff has included the quote from Precision dated July 7, 2019, for the governing body's review. The concrete shaving should take only two to three days to complete that project. And as soon as we get that project completed, staff will walk the area again, make sure everything has been completed, documented, and then we send it into KDOT for their approval, and then we'll close that case. This was a little unusual. Usually, we use the cost share program to help property owners fix these types of trip hazards. But since we were in the area and we had some deficiencies and some drainage pans, this was an opportunity for the city to partner with the property owners, and we provided labor, and again, they provided the material cost for us. However, the city is picking up the shaving at this time because we're working on our code to reinforce who pays for it, so we picked up the cost on this one. One of the things that we did on this project as well is staff made the area a bit longer and a little wider. We wanted to make sure this whole corridor was complete and wide, so we actually went from Belmont to Fleming on this project. Again, the shaving cost will be taken out of the street department. We do have a materials cost line item that will pay for that material, for that construction. Any questions on this project? We will be coming to you with a plan to address some of the ones that are coming up, and hopefully we'll have that in the next month or so.
What, Sam, what's the cost of that machine? I mean, is it something that we need to purchase maybe at some point?
It's a blade, concrete blade, that you turn upside onto side and you shave it. I would hesitate to let our personnel do that. There would be some liability to that, and this group does it for a living. There is a noise level. I was hoping the shaving would be done by the time we had this meeting. However, due to the weather and some equipment problems, they were unable to get it done. So hopefully by the end of the week, we'll get it done.
What... Some of these are... You grind them off. But that... What they're doing is different then.
They shave it. There is an issue with grinding because it does leave a rough texture. And if you're not careful, that could be considered a trip hazard as well. This is a little cleaner operation. It's a smooth surface, so you can just... When you trip, you won't be... It's a smooth surface. It's not a rough surface.
Okay. Very good.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item 7B, I'll invite Police Chief Mike Youth up to present on the McGrath Consultant Group's evidence audit.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. In January of 2019, the police department employed the services of the McGrath Consultant Group to conduct a police organizational study of the police department. In June of 2019, the study was completed and presented to the governing body. One of the 104 recommendations included to conduct an independent audit of the police department's evidence property storage areas. As an audit of this nature has never been conducted in at least the past three decades that I've been employed, if it's ever been done. In August of 2019, the McGrath Consultant Group was employed to conduct the audit of the PD evidence property storage areas and completed a report along with 36 recommendations, which is as passed for your review. There's actually 35 recommendations. Item number 22 reflects additional evidence issues, so looking back, there are 35 recommendations. Lot of work for us to do in the future. What we plan on doing is setting up another roadmap and making it add-on to our current roadmap, and then sit down and assign folks to get these tasks done and revise them. Any questions?
So are you gonna... You're gonna have to hire somebody, additional staff, or someone within the city?
We have... Currently, we have two evidence technicians. I don't really know the answer to that. I plan on looking at these, getting the roadmap situated, and sit down with both Matt and Jennifer and discuss those issues. So we'll get back with you on that.
Yeah, I appreciate the diligence going through the McGrath report, which you guys asked for. And I said, I think that you've been really following the timeline and also just that roadmap. So I'm looking forward to the additional roadmap, seeing how far we can come. But thank you for the work you've done already.
Thank you.
Do you have a timeline as to when you expect to have this new roadmap set, Chief, and when you can report back to us on how things are going?
My administrative assistant is working on the roadmap as we speak. I plan on meeting with Matt and Jennifer sometime this week, and then meeting with folks in my command staff, command group, that are responsible for the evidence function. And so I really don't have an answer to that. I hope to get the roadmap out in the next week and a half, two weeks.
Do you foresee any possibility or any way of being able to... And I recognize that there... This is over a long timeframe and these kind of things, but a specific process for trying to find some of these actual missing items? Or are they... I mean, I know there was some concern that maybe this was just documentation that was missing versus items that were missing, but do you see a way to go back and try and recover those things? Or...
Whether we can recover, I don't know.
Yeah, I know this kind of a hard question.
A lot of research will have to be done.
Sure. I did have some questions about the current roadmap as I was reading through the... If you don't mind. On page 18, number two, there was a meeting... It references a meeting that was held on September 6 about direction for acquiring medical attention for persons that were subject of less lethal conducted weapons. Can you tell us about what that was or how that... The outcome of that meeting? Is that a new policy that's being implemented completely? Or is it just a revision and update on current practices?
It's more regulation, policy revisions that they're working on.
Okay. Similar on same page, number four, a policy for crisis intervention of persons exhibiting mental illness in a rough draft is available. Could that be made available to the commission for review?
Okay. Where we're at with that is it can be, certainly. The way we... Once the regulations are revised, there's a process that we do, and the process goes from my review. And now, if it's a legal issue, it goes to the county or city prosecutor or our city counselor. And then it goes through our Police Citizens as Five Report for their review as well.
It's something I'd be interested in if it could be made available. I think that was it. And then you're planning... I saw cameras in the evidence room to be installed by the end of October.
Yes. Well, there's two areas on that. One, we have an off-site facility that we're working on. The sheriff's office is putting in all-new camera system within the law enforcement center. And so we worked with them on putting some cameras in the areas that we needed pursuant to the McGrath stuff.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Remaining two items under manager's report. We've touched on the follow-up to the GCPD organizational study. Also is the monthly sales tax report from Service and Finance. Any questions on those or other questions on those? If not, item eight's meetings of note, things requiring RSVPs or travel logistics. If you could coordinate those through CULN, we would appreciate it. There aren't any questions or comments on the meetings of note. The next item is item nine, consideration of the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2492-2019A.
I move that we approve the appropriations ordinance 2492-2019A.
I'll second your motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the appropriation ordinance. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the low bid for general obligation bonds, which were received this morning at 10:00 a.m. If approved, this would be ordinance 2851-2019. I'll invite the city's financial advisor, Brett Shogren, up to present this item.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, Brett Shogren, formerly with George K. Baum and Company in Wichita. I'll start out with George K. Baum was recently acquired by Stiefel Financial. I'll start out with George K. Baum was recently acquired by Stiefel Financial. Stiefel entered into a contract to purchase all of the public finance entities of George K. Baum and Company, and so, as of end of day Friday, I've been an employee of Stiefel Financial, Stiefel Nicholas. So, happy to be here. At a previous meeting, you approved a resolution scheduling a bond sale on Tuesday, October 1st, for the $16,130,000 taxable bonds for the electric acquisition project, and the $1,420,000 tax-exempt bonds for the irrigation system project. We developed and submitted the preliminary official statement to Moody's to solicit an underlying credit rating. We had a conference call with Matt, Melinda, Randy, and others to discuss the local economy, cities' fund balances, et cetera, everything that the credit rating agency is interested in. The call, in my opinion, went extremely well. The analyst noted that he was impressed with the city's growth, the fund balances, the Starbond project, ongoing retail development, which will hopefully boost tax, sales tax revenues, and investments by agricultural and meatpacking companies. The analyst developed the report, submitted it to their internal committee, who assigned and reaffirmed the city's AA3 rating, which you've had for a while now. It's a great rating, investment grade. The AA category is definitely a positive. They also noted, and I believe CULN passed around, the press release and the credit opinion that was made available to all potential underwriters when bidding on the bonds. They noticed a continued, or noted, rather, a continued expansion of the tax base, material increase in reserves, and moderation of debt burden could lead to an upgrade in the rating, or a deterioration of sales tax collections, a material decrease in revenues, or substantial leveraging of the tax base could lead to a downgrade. We used that credit rating and opened up bids this morning at 10:00 a.m. and received four bids on each of the issues, and you should have a sheet for any that looks like this. I apologize, it's so small, I don't know why it printed like that, but if you've got a magnifying glass, you may want to use it. On the taxable bond issue, $6,130,000, that was a 20-year issue, as I said, we received four bids. The worst bid was from Piper Jaffray and Company at 3.02%. Robert W. Baird was the third-best bid at 2.93%. Northland Securities Incorporated was the cover bid at 2.92%, and the best bid for lowest true interest cost was by SunTrust Robinson Humphrey at a true interest cost of 2.848763%. And on the smaller issue, the tax-exempt issue, it was a 10-year issue, $1,420,000, also received four bids. The worst bid was from FTN Financial Capital Markets at 2.24, 2.23%. Commerce Bank was the third-best at 2.123685%. You've got a magnifying glass for me, too.
Probably round that off if you want.
Yeah. Bernardi Securities Incorporated was the cover bid at 2.07%, and the best bid was from Robert W. Baird at 1.910993%. Melinda and Mike had requested a five-year call on the electric bonds, just in case there is a surplus of electric revenues, we can start paying off bonds early, so we can start paying those off in five years. And Marketplace accepted the five-year call, so we did that on the tax-exempt smaller issue as well. Good luck refunding those bonds, though. They're pretty low as it is. We're extremely pleased with these bids, and if you have no questions, I'd recommend accepting the bid from SunTrust Robinson Humphrey on the taxable bonds, and the bid from Robert W. Baird on the tax-exempt bonds, and adopting the ordinance and resolution after that. Once approved, we'll order the bonds printed, we'll submit the transcript to the Attorney General's Office for approval, and both bond issues will close on October 24th. Merrick Carson, your bond counsel, is also here to answer any questions about your legal documents, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions, Commissioners?
It's great rates. Thank you, and excellent result. Thanks to the city and just our community, just an incredible rating. That's pretty impressive, so, thank you.
I make a motion, we accept the bid from SunTrust Robinson Humphrey on the taxable bonds and the bid from Robert W. Baird on the, on the other bonds.
Tax exempt.
Tax exempt bonds.
10-year. Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve SunTrust and Robert Baird. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion for ordinance 2851-2019?
No.
It's just the approval of the bids.
That's just the approval of the bids. They will have to approve that.
Okay, we approve the bid. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance 2851-2019.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2851-2019. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you for your work.
Item, item B, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a resolution authorizing the sale and delivery of the general obligation bonds, series A and B, 2019, in the total amount of $17,550,000. If approved, it would be resolution 2826-2019.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution 2826-2019.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2826-2019 for general obligation bonds. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item C, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a resolution for the issuance of taxable refunding revenue bonds by Kansas Municipal Energy Agency for the Jameson Energy Center. If approved, this would be resolution 2827-2019. Mike?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. As you can just see, the bond market is very good for refinancing debt. The Kansas Municipal Energy Agency is asking permission from you, as well as their board, to refinance the Jameson Energy Center bonds. They'll be going from a non-taxable to taxable, but they feel that the savings is going to be significant enough to where it'll be beneficial to do so. The total amount of the bonds that they're going to refinance initially in 2013 was That money was used to purchase and build the Jameson Energy Center, which makes up for 27 megawatts of the city's portfolio for generation. The proceeds of these bonds, if you approve this and the full KMEA board approves, it will be go to refinance the existing bonds. Just to make a note, though, that these bonds have no effect on Garden City taxpayers or anything else. This strictly goes with the electric revenues that have to pay these bonds. We've been paying them since 2013, and it's roughly about $2.3 million per year, and we anticipate a savings of somewhere between, depending upon the interest rates, between $150,000 and $225,000 a year, so significant savings. You can approve the resolution as presented, or do not approve it. Staff recommends approving the resolution.
I make a motion, we approve resolution 2827-2019.
Second?
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2827-2019.
I just have a question. So, Mike, you said this doesn't impact Garden City, and so, that's, and I didn't get a chance to ask you beforehand, so why doesn't it impact? Do we not see any savings from this, or?
Yes, it does not impact. What I was trying to say is it doesn't impact the general fund, and it doesn't impact any sales tax or property tax. The, this impacts the electric utility, so the revenues that the utility operates on is, we pay for that completely out of the electric fund.
So, overall, it could impact us in keeping our rates consistent, or at least?
Actually lower it.
Well, actually, it will lower, and what we anticipate is the bonds that you just approved for the acquisition of the Wheatland Sunflower property, this money will be used against that bond debt, so.
Yeah, I was trying to figure that out. I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to ask you before the meeting, so, thank you.
Right. We voted, didn't we? We didn't vote?
No, no questions.
Okay, resolution 2827-2019. Any further discussion on that resolution? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance annexing a 59.7-acre parcel generally located south of Highway 5400 and west of South Towns Road. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2852-2019. I'll ask our new Neighborhood and Development Services Director, Carol Davidson, to present the side.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
First meeting.
Yep, this is my first official meeting, so good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Here to present this annexation. Hopefully, hopefully this clicker works. Okay, so, we've got a parcel here, about 59.7 acres. This is the general location. The applicant is requesting to annex this land for the development of a residential subdivision. I don't know if there's a pointer on here, but as you can see, it's south of Highway 50, just north of the Towns River View subdivision. It does cross the, or it is contiguous to the city boundary, right there at the, it's kind of the south portion of the city boundary, so it is contiguous. The, just kind of zooming in just for, a little bit more for your information, the, is there a, is there a pointer? Okay, just for your information, this, the city-owned property is right here, the Sunset Cemetery. The city actually owns that square right there that will be north of this property, and the applicant eventually would like to annex, I'm gonna go up and point where they want to annex. It'll be the rest of this parcel up here, so in all, for subdivision, so the total will be about, I had it written down here, about 182.8 acres, so it'll be a significant portion of land, but they're doing this first step to get it annexed into the land, and they'll be doing rezoning. They have shown interest in doing an RHID with this program, or with this annexation and this subdivision as well. So, any questions?
What's that little L bottom? Is that just?
Well, right now, their property is in two parcels, and they're annexing a little bit more than that lower one, but the way that they have their subdivision organized, this is how, which would make sense with their first phase.
So, at this point, Towns River View is not part of the city, it's part of the county, but now, will this become part of the city?
Towns River View, no.
No, 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 this.
That's what we're in.
Yes, the annexation request will bring it into the city with city utility, using city utilities.
So, how will, like Wheatlands and all of that, will that have to be something that's negotiated? Because I know that we will have to pay Wheatlands for the annexation, and who will pay for that?
Yes, well, that's a process that will happen after the annexation with new state law. We've got the settlement, or I don't know how you want to explain it, or how I can describe it, but we will come into negotiations with the utility companies that currently service this area, so yes, there will be an agreement.
Wheatland can request a franchise for this territory after we annex it into the city, because I think it's in Wheatland's service territory right now, and it's bare ground, isn't it, Mike? So, there's a new statute that's been passed that we're gonna have to discuss with, well, if there's development, we will have an obligation to pay for certain of the revenues over, I think it's a 10-year period of time.
So, is that, would that be something that the RHID would take care of, or would that be something, or that would be something that the city would have to bear the brunt of the cost?
The utilities.
Utilities would have to take care of it.
Yeah, I don't think it's part of an RHID.
No, I didn't know if it was, if you could, so, and then the Sunset Cemetery, you said they were going to enlarge the size of that?
No, just the city owns that property that's to the south and to the west. There is talk about possibly putting in a park there that, in part of the southern area, but the details have not been worked out on all.
Yeah, I was just, I was, yeah, I knew that you had to now pay whoever was currently with the electricity, so that's why.
Yeah, yeah, and that will be figured out.
Okay.
As part of the process.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance 2852-2019.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2852-2019. How many acres was that?
59.
59?
Point seven.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of that ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 12A, or item 12A is the governing body's being asked to approve a contract between the city and Pinnaker Smith and Associates for Governmental Affairs and Legislative Monitoring Services for 2020. The city's used Pinnaker and Smith for these services since 2015. We feel we're well-served by the firm. This is within the threshold to approve under the city manager's signature. However, since it is lobbying services, our practice since we began using representation in Topeka or in Washington, DC, is to disclose that in a public meeting as a business item to get the commission's approval of that. So, our recommendation would be to approve the contract again for the 2020 session with Pinnaker and Smith and Associates.
I make a motion, we approve the contract as presented.
I'll second.
Did you get that? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve Pinnaker and Smith Associates for Governmental Affairs and Legislative Monitoring Services for 2020. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
12B is similar. The governing body has asked to consider and approve a contract between the Southwest Kansas Coalition, which is the partnership between the municipalities of Garden City, Dodge City, and Liberal, with Pinnaker and Smith and Associates for the Governmental Affairs and Legislative Monitoring Services in 2020. So, the difference in this would be, there is a specific legislative policy adopted by those three communities. It's much narrower than what we would have Pinnaker and Smith do on the city of Garden City's behalf. The, at our annual meeting of the Southwest Kansas Coalition, those, all three municipal governments were represented there. We don't take action, and in those meetings, our action is taken up by each of the three boards in our home cities' regular meetings, so somewhere around this time, both the city of Dodge City and the city of Liberal would be considering this item as well.
I make a motion, we approve the proposal as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Pinnaker, Smith, and Associates for the Southwest Kansas Coalition. That'd be Garden City's portion, 13,000. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 12C, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a bid for the purchase of an articulated four-wheel-drive loader with a sectional snowplow. Sam?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, that's a mouthful.
That sounds awesome.
Beds were open September 24, 2019, in the city administration building at 10:00 a.m. for an articulated four-wheel-drive loader with a sectional push plow. Staff sent bids out to eight dealers. We only received four bids. Murphy Tractor was the low bid, however, they did not meet the specifications for the sectional plow, push plow, and the best bid for the articulated four-wheel-drive loader with a sectional plow. And the best bid for the articulated four-wheel-drive loader with a sectional plow is Foley Equipment for $146,479.32. And that's the reason we're in front of you today, is because the low bid did not meet the specifications.
Sam, could you provide a short layperson's definition of the difference between a sectional snowplow and a solid snow pusher?
Okay, what we use currently is the sectional plows, the street department, all of our skid loaders, everything is sectional. So if we're operating next to a curb, a sectional can, it'll, when it bumps into a curb, that section will rise and meet the sidewalk, so you could actually plow the sidewalk and, and the street at the same time. A straight plow won't allow you to do that. It'll tilt, and you won't get as good a product. And with these, it, it works better in the downtown area, it works with curbs. And, and I think the airport's gonna use this, this push plow in parking lots, so it works really well in parking lots. The other thing is, we do have the parts at the street department, so if something goes wrong with it, we have the parts to fix it. So all our plows will be the same. The other thing is, if they somehow damage this plow, then we would have a backup for them at the street department if they needed it. So again, we're trying to keep all equipment the same.
I make a motion we approve the bid for the articulated four-wheel-drive loader with the sectional push plow for, from Foley Equipment for the $146,479.32.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Foley Equipment bid for $146,479.32. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I tried to talk her out of it. That is a cat, and I would love to have a cat in my inventory, but she, she just won't give it up.
She might let you borrow it.
Yeah.
I guess she will. That was just a suggestion.
Yeah.
That's a pretty good discount for government use, isn't it?
Quite, that's how they won that bid. It was.
$146,000.
Government discount.
Item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve city projects eligible for the new KDOT cost share program. Sam?
We're gonna triple team you a little bit. I have Adam from engineering who's gonna help explain some of the projects, and Rochelle's gonna be here for the airport project. Give you a little bit of background, the Kansas Department of Transportation has launched a new program designed to provide state funding for transportation projects. The new program will provide funding to local entities for transportation projects that improve safety, support job retention and growth, improve access, mobility, and receive, relieve congestion across the state. Up to $50 million will be available in the program for fiscal year 2020. The ongoing program, which is $11 million, requires a minimum of 15% local cash match. An additional consideration will be given to project applications that submit more than the minimum required local match amount. The funding above the base $11 million comes from a one-time $50 million state general fund transfer. A minimum of 25% local match is required for projects to qualify for this one-time funding. Applications shall include investments that provide transportation benefits and are not eligible for other KDOT programs. Projects may receive additional consideration if they support economic growth, add-in retention or recruitment for businesses, or add value to a KDOT project. The program is open to all transportation projects, including on and off-state highway system, rail, airport, bicycle pad, and public transit. The funds from the program can only be used for construction costs. Applications will be accepted on an ongoing basis beginning September 3, 2019, and will be received twice per year in October and March. The first deadline is October 11, 2019. Staff has included a spreadsheet with potential projects and information related to each for the governing body's review and consideration. Below is a list of priority, prioritized staff projects for your consideration. So I'm gonna have Andy, or Adam, come up and explain some of these projects, and then, of course, the airport manager here is to answer questions on her project as well.
Yeah, so we, this is one of the first, well, really the first KDOT program since I've been working in Kansas that is open to really just any project, anywhere in the city, anywhere in the county. You know, normally there's a lot of stipulation, it has to be on the highway system, or, you know, some of the specialty ones, like the, like the TAP grants that we do high bike trails or the streetscapes with. So this is very much a catch-all, something the community's been calling for for a long time. And so it really is open to all projects. So when this came about, you know, the question was, well, gosh, what projects do we, do we look at? So the list that we came up with is really based on either things that have been identified in the CIP, have been discussed at a commission level, or at, just even at a staff level, of, you know, problems that have been identified as either something we've already looked into or that we feel we need to look into. So those projects, I guess, in order, do you wanna talk about yours now, or should we skip over it?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. So because this program is open to, you know, Sam mentioned, airports, transit, and surface transportation. So the thing people think of the most is surface transportation, but there are those other aspects. So that's, you know, the airport also has some interest in this. From a surface transportation standpoint, really the three top priorities we, we identified were the Jenny Barker-Schulman intersection, the Spruce-Fleming intersection, and Campus Drive from Kansas to Fulton. Based on need, we really identified the latter two. The Spruce and Fleming, you know, that's been discussed here before. We discussed it in our modern transportation pre-meeting, and it's been studied for, Sam can say more about that than I can, but for years, to warranting a signal or not, which has never met warrants. But, you know, there have been accidents, there are a lot of citizen complaints. The Campus Drive is just kind of in disrepair from, from a pavement quality standpoint. Right now, the detour is, for the bypasses going down that route. The KDOT is already putting some money towards doing some Band-Aid improvements to that stretch. So from a need standpoint, that's where we kind of have those. Jenny Barker-Schulman intersection, you know, that's another one we discussed at the, at the pre-meeting. Maybe not quite as high of a, from a need standpoint, but I wanted that in there because that's kind of a now or not-for-awhile thing, because of obviously our major improvements we're doing on Jenny Barker Road. If, if we're gonna do something, if we're serious about doing something at that intersection, you know, putting a roundabout at that intersection, we kind of need to do it now, apply now, see if we get the funding. If we don't get the funding, we move forward. If we do get the funding, you know, it will delay our, it will obviously delay the project, probably to 2021 construction on Jenny Barker Road. And, you know, we'd have, we'd have to design that and incorporate it into the project. If we don't get awarded, or we decide not to pursue it now, you know, I think we'd all kind of have egg on our face if we came back a year later, or two years later, and tore out what we just, you know, just constructed to do that. So that's kind of why we have that one towards the top of the list, is just if there's an appetite for that, we kind of need to, to move forward on that. The other projects, so again, those are kind of the three we put at the top of our list. Leslie de Rue, another roundabout that was discussed at the pre-meeting. Has some citizen complaints and problems at that intersection. That one does warrant a little additional study to make sure that it, with its proximity to the Kansas Avenue signal. That's not one we want to jump right into without doing a little more analyzing of. Fleming Mary, Fleming Mary intersection, that's one that's been identified for quite a while. Sam, can you speak on that a little better?
When we reconstructed Mary into concrete, we also purchased right-of-way at that intersection in case we wanted to build a fifth lane or a turning lane. So you can see the power, power poles, they kind of in that stretch. Well, that identifies that additional right-of-way that we have in that location for that future project.
Sam, is that the north side?
That would be all to the north.
North side of the Mary.
Kind of have to jog a little bit at that intersection. And one of, one of the things we had to do, we had a lot of complaints, there were some near misses of making a left-hand turn, waiting a lot of phases, and we ended up split-phasing that intersection. So, or equal, let me see. Westbound goes first, eastbound, and then the two north-south go together. That makes that intersection a little efficient, because we're kind of holding people up. And we could actually have a turning lane that would speed up the traffic. And with the school being there, again, we have a large backup system. Ford, he goes on to the next, and I did want to reach out and at least identify the airport project, the terminal. You guys did apply for it, did not get it. It is a big project. It would have a hard time due to the, the amount of money that we have and what they're proposing with this. They're probably gonna divide the money up geographically, and I don't know if they're gonna put everything into one basket, but hey, it's an opportunity to at least apply for it. And so we definitely want to make sure that that airport's in there somehow, but again, that would be your decision. Anything else you want to say about the airport?
Of course, thank you. So here's my sales pitch. You know, as you're aware, the airport terminal project, we did a terminal area plan over the past year, 200-page document supporting the need for a new terminal. We did apply for supplemental FAA funding. We did not receive that. So we're looking for every opportunity. You know, staff has looked for multiple ways to fund this project, like Sam referred to, it is very expensive. So we're looking for every opportunity to have some help with the funding of this project. With the KDOT grant, it seems like the application for the airport terminal would suit it very good, meeting all their criteria, plus we're not eligible for any other kind of KDOT funding. It is a big cost for the total city cost with this application process. If we were selected, you know, 25% of the construction cost would be on the city, but then we also have additional engineering fees, design fees, everything like that. But we're looking at, if we were awarded this grant, we could potentially find $2 to $4 million from the FAA to support the design of that. So that's gonna reduce the impact to the city by potentially $2 to $4 million, bringing that price town, price point down a little bit. But it is still a very big project that we need to consider. You know, the discussion today about the pool and how we pay for that, you know, that's something we also need to keep in the back of our minds as a city commission goal for this year is the airport terminal and how other options we can look at funding this terminal, whether it's bonding or looking at opportunities like this. So that's why we think it'd be a great opportunity to try and see what shakes out for us on this.
Go ahead. So can we, it says application, or it has an S, so can we submit more than one application?
You can submit. I would show some guidance on how many you're gonna commit. That's what we brought ours up on a little bit. You can see in, in the spreadsheet, we kind of identified the ones, if you wanted to hurry up, and put an application in in October. Those top four, we kind of said, you know, if you're interested in one or more of those, you could do that, because I think we're ready to submit. It doesn't take a detailed application. Now, one thing on, on these applications, we also have to tell story. So any project that we submit, we better have a story that backs it up. We need community backing. Whatever we can do, the more we can apply, the better. Now, we did, on this spreadsheet, you have the total cost, the construction cost, and you can see the construction cost is the only thing that they will participate in. We provided the 25% for the local match, and then the other city cost would be your design engineering, city inspection, right-of-way acquisition, or anything like that. And so if you look, the total city cost is kind of what you're gonna be looking at, be the, the local match when you look at your list going through there. And then we kind of showed you a percentage of what that city cost would be on the overall cost of the project, so.
So why does that, Adam, why does that push the Jenny Barker back to 2021? Is it because you wouldn't have enough time to get everything ready, or?
Yeah, I think it'd just be, as far as getting everything designed, you know, that area redesigned, getting some additional right-of-way. You know, we have one property owner that was not wanting to deal with us, that was only affected by the possible right, you know. We talked about pursuing right-of-way for a future roundabout during this process. We had one property owner who basically told us to take him to court. And we can't really do that on a project that's not imminent. So we pretty well dropped that, that property acquisition from this project, from the Jenny Barker project, because that's the only reason we were even interested in that property. We don't need it for the Jenny Barker project. So that property, as well as potentially another one, we know, we'd have to go through some process with. And then just the design process. There's some electric utility, some pretty major electric utility relocations that would have to take place as part of that as well.
But on that project, since the Star Bond's been in there, Mike's been looking at the electric component, there might be a reason to move there. Because we had the offset, and I think we have the drawing for your review, we kind of had to offset that roundabout to ease a little bit. If we didn't have to do that, the impact to that property is so small that.
Yeah, maybe.
Be more workable probably for that property owner. So Matt, you have those pictures at the end for those projects, and we can give them a quick review. You've got the airport, so you'll get a picture of what the proposed terminal's gonna look like.
If you do multiple projects, are they submitted in one group, or are they submitted separately?
They're submitted separately, but we'll send them all together.
I thought that Campus Schulman intersection was interesting, to drop it down.
And here's, here's the Jenny Barker project. And the right-of-way we're talking about is in this corner right here that we're having some difficulties. And you can see we've shifted it. If we could shift it back, then we'll be a lot closer to staying in the right-of-way.
Adam, you've currently designed this with the signalization as the traffic control, right?
Correct. Well, it's four-way stop, which then really signalization, you know, there's not much to change from a geometric standpoint.
Right.
Yeah, the original project only calls for a four-way stop at this time at that intersection.
But we've got a request in because of the sales tax issue for signalization to the state of Kansas.
Well, that's at 156.
Oh, at 156, okay. This is Schulman.
Now, this, this intersection was in a study that identified this intersection as being a possible roundabout, same way with Leslie de Rue, and there was one other.
Yeah, you're right. I read that wrong.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the project applications for Campus Drive and one for the Garden City Regional Airport Terminal. For, when I say campus, I mean Kansas Avenue to Fulton Street.
So is that four projects?
No, it's two.
Two.
Two. Jenny Barker and the airport?
No. Campus Drive, which is Kansas Avenue to Fulton Street, and then an application for the Garden City Regional Airport Terminal.
Just to let you know, we submit a project in for the October, they will hold that over as for selection in March as well. So we'll have a two-shot deal, that part of that $50 million, just to let you know.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the, basically, the first and fourth, right?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm gonna vote no on this in just a few moments, because I'd like to include the Jenny Barker-Schulman intersection, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure why we wouldn't do all four, but we don't know what we're gonna get. So, any other discussion?
Is this gonna be, do we think this is gonna be a refund at any time? Or is this like a one-shot, they did that one transfer over, and that $50 million?
That $50 million could be a one-time shot. We hope with, if the interest in the state is really big, we're hoping that it'll come back. But this is a one-time deal for that $50 million.
And KDOT's, KDOT's a little non-committal on how much of that is in October versus also included in March. They say $3 to $38 million of it will be October. So if it's $38 million, that only leaves 12 additional come March. You know, if it's three, then most of it's March. They kind of say it's gonna depend on demand, which I think is gonna be pretty high.
So if they turn it down, we could reapply, like, for example, the airport?
If, if we apply in October.
Right.
And we don't get it for October, it will. And we don't get it for October, it will automatically go to March, and they will reconsider it. In March, we won't have to reach to them that till March.
But we can put in additional come March. So it's kind of almost broken up into, like, it's an annual thing, broken up kind of into two sub-applications, I guess.
So why don't we, I'm not trying to speak for reasoning in those two, but I would support those two just because they're the highest-cost projects. Maybe go big first and then see what comes in March. Is that kind of the reasoning?
Well, and then for Kansas and Fulton, it's getting pretty much destroyed because of the detour. I mean, that one, that one is just.
And I think we're gonna have some credit for Fulton, too, for that, because.
And I understand that, and that'll help us maybe enhance.
That would come, I believe that would come out of the state's participation. It wouldn't change the cities because the state will not.
They will count their own money towards our local match.
Correct.
But it it helps if they're, yeah, it could help the reasoning behind them saying yes to that project.
But they're the ones, they're the ones redirecting the traffic onto our city street and destroying our city street, is the thing.
But they're giving us some money for that.
I understand that.
I don't know how much.
So that's our story.
That's our story.
You started it.
Yeah, you start it. You fix it.
We might pick different wording in the.
So in itself, it doesn't make a good flag, but we do have a identifiable, recognizable city symbol.
Again, like Adam said, it's a Band-Aid. This is not a Band-Aid. This is complete new construction.
And I think it is a fine line with any of these grant programs of, you know, a good set of projects that we're very serious about, you know. You don't want to just submit one, you know, if you have several, but at the same time, you don't kind of want to do the spray and pray approach either. Because, you know, they're not gonna appreciate, you know, we submitted all 10 of these, you know. Which one are you serious about? You know, it's hard to be serious about any of them, so.
But, you know, on the Campus Drive one, that's important because it's one of the arteries. It's one of our city commission goals is to put that into concrete. And it's also getting destroyed in the same fashion because they're running all of their traffic because of the reconstruction of the bypass down that street, all the truck traffic and everything down that street. So, I mean, that makes sense. But then the terminal is part of our economic development for our community, and it's, you know, for the region.
Yeah, I agree with those two projects. The only project I would want to add to that was the Jenny Barker-Schulman intersection because I think this is a one-time shot. I mean, getting another chance at that would, that's years. It's not, we wouldn't tear it back up again. So that's what I'm saying. That's the only one I'd want to add, so.
Well, but we're not gonna be able to.
No, you have to.
What?
We'll call the question and then we can.
All right. Any other commission comments? All those in favor of that motion, which would be one and four, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Two nays.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Consent agenda item got a little bit longer this meeting. If approved, it would be items E1 and 2.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, consent agenda, items E1 and 2.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Commissioner Cessna.
Fall cleanup has started and is going on in the community. Just be mindful of that. It's great to have this type of service available in our community, and it keeps our community nice. DEA office is coming and going to open in our community. So congratulations to that. Great job, Chief, on all your work on getting that here. It's a big win for our community, but also for the region as well, having that office here in Garden City. Looks like the irrigation system's going in well at the cemetery. We were walking through that area, and it's starting to look pretty good, even though it's all kind of dug up, but there, it looks, looks like it's going in pretty well. Wanted to mention the other thing that I know the 2020 census is in April, but they're still looking at hiring census takers. So anybody out there that would be interested in helping be a census taker, it's online. I don't, Melissa, do you have that web address available, or no?
No, because it's quite lengthy online.
Okay.
But if you go to Census 2020, there should be a link that says.
Just go to Census 2020, and it'll have jobs on there. So I know they're still looking. We just had a census committee meeting, and they're still looking for census takers in our community. And that's all I've got. And glad to see the rain in our community.
Commissioner Dick.
I want to reemphasize and congratulate the work that Mosaic does with that job placement with their clients with special needs. It's a really important thing that they do for their clients and for our community, and it's good to see the traction that they've got with the businesses that do take on those clients, and it does make an impact on those clients. So that's really good to see. Went to a lot of the Centennial Celebration for the Garden City Community College. Really good turnout, especially on the day where they did the whole thing out in the quad, and a lot of people came out to that. That was really good. And then the other thing was, I think you just shut off yours. I was gonna bring it up, was the sales tax numbers. If you go look, take a look at the sales tax collections, that, this last collection figure was the highest that we've ever had that wasn't a Christmas sale. And we're collecting on a rate that was about more, about 10% higher than what we were collecting during the Christmas sales of 2014. So, I mean, we're doing very well with the sales tax collection. That's good to see as we continue to grow as a retail hub, and we continue to have a strong economy here. Thank you.
Very good.
Every day is Christmas.
Every day, at least every month.
Or should be.
New motto.
New motto.
Christmas in Garden City.
Commissioner Andrew.
So I just want to, well, welcome, Carol, and for your first meeting. We're excited about having you on board, and I know you're, everyone else in your department is excited that you're here. So thank you so much. I also want to thank Sam for the update on the Labrador. I know those things are difficult to get taken care of, but I really appreciate your following through with all of the pieces of that. I also would ask, I've had a lot of people ask me about the pothole update, so, and so if we could kind of talk a little bit about that, you don't have to give it now, but I mean in a future commission meeting, and then what, what we're planning for this winter and what you're anticipating, and that looks like.
Less now.
You add less now.
Less now.
Yeah, the moisture's really good, so I think that's really good. I'm excited about the projects that we're proposing. I really appreciate the pre-meeting today. There's so much time and energy, and the people coming, the guys who came out today to talk about the whole big pool just talks about how serious they are about the whole process. And so I appreciate them being here today and then really doing a good job. And it sounds like we're, we've got some ambitious, Sam, ambitious timeline that we're working on. I also want to say thank you to Chief for the moving that forward. I know that the whole audit was important, and it was important that you asked for it. It's important to us as a commission that we're taking care of that and really helping our police department become the best in the state. I know that they impact a lot of people. I really enjoyed seeing the explorers out there, the Garden City Explorers, which are a younger group of people, but also the citizens who actually work on your citizens' police force and just how it all plays a part into our community. I'm grateful for the rain. I'm excited about fall finally getting here. And so I just want to say. You want, yeah, we need that. I want to stop mowing. But I just want to say I'm excited and then the things that are happening in Garden City.
Commissioner Burns.
I'll just add on the topic of the pool conversation and the pre-meeting. It was an outstanding meeting. Obviously, a lot of due diligence has been put in now for years on the part of our staff, and then I was impressed with their presentation today. I guess, and I think this challenge was kind of laid out to us by the firm, but I would also, you know, to my fellow commissioners, say, I think it's time for us to really start solidifying our position in our mind about a number that we're willing to spend here, and even just a ballpark, and really what are our values in the way that they outlined, you know, that three-part, that Venn diagram of where the sweet spot is, competing amongst what features we want, what the cost is, and what the tech, you know, the, all, that whole combination. Because I feel like we, it's now to us to really outline what we're willing to do and be real about it. And I think that's gonna be, the aggressive timelines coming up for us to lay that out very clearly to them. And I don't think that we should put that on them to bring it all to us. We have to be an active participant in that, that conversation. So that's what I would challenge our commission to do, is to be very concrete about, you know, what our expectations are and what our number is, where our boundaries are around this project.
David?
That's it.
Doesn't leave me much. No, I, pre-meeting was great. Can't add much to it. I think, I think the way they approach this, I think, is really good. The way they, the details and the things that they bring up. Obviously, they've done this before, and I'm glad we selected them. I did participate in the parade at the Garden City Community College, waved at the crowd, and we went around once at least the campus. Good turnout. Carol, I want to welcome you, and I know that we're glad you're here, but I'm sure Sam is really glad you're here. Right, Sam?
Right.
Right. So he did a good job filling in, and I appreciate that. That's all I have. Anything else?
No, sir.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you all.